July first meeting of the Westboro Planning Board. My name is Hazel Nurse, I'm the chairman of the board. To my far left is Jenny Jengres, our town planner. Caroline Regan is next to her. I'm Christina Kelleher, John Pizzoni next to me. And John Gelsich will be coming a little later. And on my far right is Dirk Belido, who is our administrative assistant. The public meeting and hearings is the first thing on our list. I want to remind people this meeting is being televised by Westboro TV. And I'd like to thank them for doing that for us. The first thing on the agenda essentially is the application for 220 Turnpike Road, in which we have a request for a continuation until our August meeting, which will be August 5th, 2025. Jenny, maybe you could just bring us up to date as for the way we're having the continuation.
Sure, so we had a staff meeting with the applicant and CEI, who was doing the peer review. And it was mostly about the stormwater and the analysis. And talking about the Conservation Commission's comments as well. And they need some data regarding the soil. So they have to go back and do additional soil testing. And we would need the results for that to continue the peer review. So essentially, we're waiting on that. And once we have that, we can complete the peer review. And then hopefully, at that point, they can come back to the board.
Are they meeting with the Conservation Committee tonight? I remember originally they were going to meet tonight. But I guess not, since they still don't have the data they need?
No, I think it's July 14th, I want to say.
Oh, maybe that's when it's, the middle of July.
Yes, yeah, mid-July.
All right. So are there any questions from any member of the board or requests of continuation? If not, could I have a motion to grant the continuation of this matter until our August meeting, which will be August 5th?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, Jenny, the only other thing really on our agenda tonight are the zoning changes, which I know you sent out this afternoon. I don't know where everybody's had a chance to review them yet. And we're just at a point of discussion at this point. Now, these changes you're looking to present at the town meeting in October? Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. On that, or maybe we'll start with...
I can pull it up and we can have a discussion.
Yeah, for anybody that doesn't have it. I have, I have a printed copy, just because I, quite frankly, don't work well off computer copies.
No worries.
And I have one extra here. Either you got both on your computers, all right?
Yep, thank you though.
And so, one thing I wanted to also talk about. I did send you all an email with a draft survey to get more community input. We did get quite a bit of feedback in the first downtown plan about types of uses that people want to see downtown and basically how they want the future of downtown to look pertaining to zoning and uses.
Would you like a comment on the survey before we continue? Should we look at that first?
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Okay, because I did have a couple of comments.
Okay, and I can pull it up if you want?
Yeah, why don't you do that? I mean, I thought on the whole, it was, really covered everything very nicely. But I do feel, mainly because I've had a lot of comment from various people, I guess throughout the community. There are many people who feel that we do not need to make any change in the rotary. And I think, I don't know how you feel about this, but I'd like to see a question on the survey. You know, are you in favor of leaving the rotary as is?
Well, I'm trying to keep these two things separate. So that is something, the reorientation of the rotary is something separate from the zoning. And I don't want to confuse the two, because it's a town meeting. I don't want it to seem like we're voting on, you know, changing the rotary.
No, but what I was thinking about was the survey you're sending out.
Yeah, so separately, we are looking for additional comments on the rotary. And we have, we've received over 100 comments just on the online form pertaining...
Yeah, it's the online form that I really took a look at. And as I said, I thought it was, you know, very well worded. And I thought it really covered everything. But I did feel there should be a question on there for the public as far as whether they feel that the rotary should remain as it is with safety.
Yeah. I have, so just a quick clarifying question. So when you're saying the online form, do you mean the one that was distributed this week as a draft or the one that's already live?
I, you just, it's just a draft so far, right?
Right, but the draft stuff is only about the zoning. The rotary already has a form online, people can...
Is that the one that has been, I mean, the one I looked at that you sent was, I thought also had to do with the downtown, because it mentioned the downtown?
Yes, because it's zoning about the downtown. It's about the types of uses that people want to see. So if you go to...
That's what I'm saying, is that because it seems to ask what people want to see down there, I mean, I, I do feel that we need some feedback on whether or not people feel that these changes are necessary.
Yeah, and we'll be doing more of that. I just don't want to get the two confused, because they're two totally different things. And I don't want to risk the zoning not changing because of the rotary project.
All right, well then, as I said, you've got a lot of questions in there about the uses down there. I mean, it's, I would have read it as sort of a survey of my feelings about what should be done in the downtown area. So if I had a feeling that I didn't feel that we needed to make any changes in the downtown area, you see where I'm coming from on that?
Yeah, so maybe we can go through the questions and then you can give feedback. I certainly didn't mean to have that perception, just because we're still working on the rotary. We had a lot of feedback, positive and negative. And like I said, we had a lot of comments online. We had a lot of comments at the public meeting and then more. We plan to present to the select board in the next couple of months to get an understanding from them, what they see, because they also hear things. But that's not about the zoning. That is just about...
Maybe at the beginning of the questionnaire, you should have something that makes it clear that this just has to do with changes in zoning to allow such uses if the downtown area is modified. That's all I'm asking is, because it was not clear to me in reading the survey. I thought the questions were great. I mean, I thought they were exactly what you'd need for the questions. But it was not clear to me that this had to do with zoning.
Maybe we just say this has nothing to do with the rotary.
Yeah, just explicitly, no, that was, that was one of my suggestions, is just that. It's like, I think we need a little bit more context on zoning and like what that means. Just a little bit of context. And then additionally, like note this, because technically, you could leave the rotary as is. You could still make 100 changes to the zoning.
Right.
So I think just calling that, yeah.
And that's what the whole plan is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's all, yeah, just for clarification.
Oh, for zoning, yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
So it's purely clarification, is just because the way I read it, it didn't tell me it was zoning, really.
Yeah, I can, I can do that. I'll work on the description, yeah.
Yeah, totally, yeah.
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 Yeah, it's tough, because they're happening simultaneously. But yeah, this is only about the zoning. And it's a follow-up to the downtown plan, just talking about the zoning. We have had a lot of comments as a result of the comment form on the rotary.
Right.
But it's, but the comments, some of them are only about zoning. Like thing, for example, many people wanted to see more uses geared towards teens, middle school, high school, like indoor recreational activities, outdoor, like a arcade-type shop, things like that. So that's just an example, and, but I don't want to get the two confused.
Right, right, and I said, I was confused. So maybe, whether other people may not be confused. But as I said, it was that. And now, I, quite frankly, I have not looked at the online survey on the rotary. So I will go and look at that.
Okay.
We can go through it if you want.
You haven't seen any, yeah.
I didn't even know there was one.
I emailed it out.
I didn't see it, sorry.
I'll email it out again.
It was like a month ago, yeah.
That's why, sorry.
Oh, no, it was only last week. You said a month ago?
Wasn't it a while back?
No, I only did it last week.
Which, now which survey are we talking about?
The zoning, the one up here.
Oh, yes, this I received.
I think John was talking about the one...
I was talking about the rotary.
The downtown.
Oh, yeah.
I've not seen the rotary one.
Yeah, well, the presentation I sent out to the board that was done. So you'll have to watch that. And we're working on, not to confuse this with the rotary, but we are working with the consultant right now to respond to all of the comments we received. We're creating a comment matrix, so that every comment gets a response. And we're still working on that. That's in very early stages, trying to, you know, massage out all the details and make sure that we respond to everybody. So that's not set in stone yet at all.
Okay.
That's the point of those public meetings, right? I guess for the public too, like, we're not there to say, this is final, this is done. We're there to get comments, because we want those comments to incorporate into the plan, because that's important, right?
Do we, within that other survey, is there, I don't think there's like a mandatory form field for like a contact information, but is there some sort of indicator? Like if someone already took it, that we would know, in case you're getting... It's one thing to be like, oh, I submitted content or a comment, and now I have another thought. But it's another thing to just like keep submitting.
Yeah, I don't think you can in using forms, Microsoft Forms. People can submit their information, or they can do it anonymous.
Right, okay.
Okay, so this is the zoning survey we're proposing to put out. And we did a lot of work with the downtown plan, but this just kind of follows up with it. And just getting more information from people, diving a little deeper into the zoning. So these are just general, gives us an idea of who the person is. Do they live, work, own a business? How often do they visit?
Can I make comments throughout? Is it helpful? So with the visit, and again, keeping this separate from the rotary, I think it's important to note visit versus go through the downtown area. So maybe it's like visit a business.
Drive-through or walk-through or...
Yeah, but like not just drive-through, right?
Yes, make sure that it's like an actual...
Yeah.
And do we include in that the, like Roach Brothers in that area? Is that, is that inclu, is that a stop in the downtown area?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all part of that.
It's all part of the zoning.
Since I know from the second page that you can add photos, it might be helpful to just have a little bit of like a map of the area, so you know what that, what we mean by downtown. Because that's a good question on Bay State.
The zoning overlay map, Jenny?
Yeah, I can do that.
As long as, I think as long as the colors aren't confusing.
I can clean it up. We have tools to do that.
I mean, in other words, that would be at the beginning. Put the zoning map at the beginning of the whole thing.
Yeah, just like this is the area for reference. This is the area we're talking about.
Exactly, so start it out at the beginning, because to try to fit it into this format, I don't think it's going to work. But if it's right at the beginning, people really catch your eye as to what it is.
Yeah.
And then I think this question is really important for us to understand what people really enjoy about downtown and like about it. And then this is for really the new uses and spaces that we would like to know if people agree with seeing. So this is just like sidewalk dining, outdoor cafes. And this was feeding off of the feedback we received on the downtown plan. The apartments above the condo, or condos above shops, which we do currently have. These are townhouses, row houses. This is rendering of a makerspace. So I found some really good examples of other communities that had these, where it was really geared towards teens and young adults, where they could go in and paint, or do like classrooms.
Aren't we getting one in the old Vivasity spot?
I haven't heard that.
Well, I just, I just... I believe that I saw a craft slash makerspace.
I saw something.
I just saw something about that too.
It was on Facebook, I think, wasn't it? Yeah, yeah.
All my credible news sources.
I have not heard that, but it goes near, it's not true. Some of these things, it's important to note, may already be allowed under our current zoning. Remember, our zoning is very general, which is good. But this is also their tools to get people to come in and put these spaces downtown, because we're saying that they're allowed and we want them.
So I'm just going back up a little bit to the actual prompt for this one. New uses or spaces. I wonder if there's something, a differentiator within the question to call out what you just said, Jenny? What type, or just like what types of uses, maybe like new or existing, right? Yeah.
And then small grocery or specialty food shops, outdoor recreation, social spaces for tweens and teens, that's right, with the arcades, teen cafe, gaming spot, small restaurants, brew pubs, small-scale retail shops. Again, things that we do have.
One missing piece, Jenny, I think if we are, since Bay State is part of this, is also a large grocery. Like would we want to have that, like if we're looking at all of the zoning?
Is Roach Brothers going somewhere?
No.
No, but if it's like, what do you want zoned for downtown? I only want, I don't know, small restaurants.
I think are additional things.
But they're, but they aren't all. I guess, I guess just going off of Jenny's comment, like some of these, we have retail, we have some small restaurants, not brew pubs, but I think, I guess just a question, if saying like what do people want to see, we don't have to include every single thing.
Like a shopping plaza, something like that? Additional shopping plazas?
I guess, so if you're going into this with, what do I want to see downtown? And we're thinking about, without even, you know, as you're taking this survey, how, what do you want to be allowed? Or what do you want to see? I think we should also include some of the uses that exist currently, as some of these do.
Yeah, but maybe what we're looking at is, what types of spaces would you like to see added to the additional, added to the present downtown?
Yeah, but I think since they're not all, we have some. What if you're like, I want town...
That doesn't mean we don't want more of them.
Right, but I think, I think we need to differentiate. So if you're saying, I'm fine with the townhouses we have now, or I'm fine with the apartments or condos above that we have now, but I don't want anymore, I think that's just like a different...
Well, we have that question down here. Do you think housing should be allowed or expanded? Yeah, I see what you're saying. I'm not sure, because, I mean, all of these things could even go into Bay State. I mean, they have condos.
Right.
They have retail. I could change this from small grocery to just grocery.
I think your idea for grocery, like small groceries, is kind of like a...
It's different.
Well, this was from feedback down, this was from feed, I didn't make these up. These, this, these are what people said from the downtown plan that they wanted.
Yeah.
I envision like at Kennedy's in Marlboro, you ever been to?
Yes.
They got the restaurant, they have the market out front. You're not going there every day for grocery shopping, but like...
In other words, it's a place you can run into the, it's more, they're more specialty shops.
Yeah, the specialty food shops.
I think small, I mean, I think small grocery is fine too.
Okay.
We can leave it, I was just...
I think, yeah, I actually think that's probably small grocery, specialty food shops is good, because we really don't have anywhere right in the downtown area where you can run in, except for Cumberland Farms and...
But we're, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I agree there aren't any...
You can't run in to get a few things, but it isn't just, you know, milk and Pepsi. I mean, you know, we have no place where you can...
But if we're, I guess the flip side to that is, is since Bay State is part of the downtown, we do, we definitely do, right? It's not as convenient as like something out here.
Well, that's why it'd be nice to be able, actually in the downtown versus Bay State Commons to have, I'm sure there is some sort of covenants not to compete in that.
Oh, sure, oh, sure.
That are going to cause a serious problem.
Right.
So I would look more at the fact of looking to put in small grocery store. I mean, for example, where Sabatini's going out. If you had a small specialty grocery shop in there, it'd be perfect.
Yes.
Because it's a place you could park, you run in and you get, you know, maybe they have, you know, a meat or a vegetable or something like that. That's all I'm saying.
No, I agree, but we said that we're including Bay State in this. I don't know, I guess I'm just thinking for people who don't have context or haven't really thought through what they want, or even what we have, we can, like, we can move on, because maybe it all gets like sorted also.
He used the word increased, which is good.
Right.
Yeah, so I changed it to see increased or added.
Yeah.
That really covers it.
With the other option as well, people can...
Yeah, and people can type in something. And then, do you think housing should be allowed or expanded in downtown? We did get comments, the last plan, that people did want to see more housing... We did get comments, the last plan that people did want to see more housing options, small housing options. So, um, these are just the options here. And then, would you support zoning changes to promote more mixed use development? So, we do allow mixed use, but, um, it's not, um, specific in the zoning. It's a little vague, like someone just reading it without calling or inquiring wouldn't really understand that we allow that. And then, should zoning support more flexibility for reusing older or underutilized buildings downtown? Um, that was something that.
Does it not?
Um, I think it does.
Depends on what they're changing into, and so, you know, there's a real variation when you look at the, the buildings downtown.
Yeah, that's more about like the dimensional stuff, because you do with older buildings. I mean, when they built, um, like the arcade building, zoning didn't exist.
Right.
Now, if that was going to be built, they'd have totally different zoning and they wouldn't be able to build what's there.
Right, okay, that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Um, how important is it that new buildings match the historic or small town character of downtown? Um, that's kinda getting into what, you know, the design review board will be looking at is the, um, the regulations of downtown. Because we do have, um, architectural guidelines existing for downtown.
That is something we are working, that need to be revised as it is. There, it's like twenty pages long and impossible to understand.
Right, so this is kind of also helping us understand what the public feels. Um, if it's important to them, what design features do you want to see more downtown?
I think you just need, um, check all that apply for that one.
This one?
Yeah.
I think I might, let's see, oh yeah, no limit.
Just, I guess just to note, or does it say?
Oh, say, I, I see what you mean. Okay. And then, this is all from the feedback from the downtown plan. So if there's anything else that you're thinking about, I can certainly add it.
You do have a space after that one where it says other.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. And then the process and vision, um, are there certain uses you think should be limited or discouraged downtown? And then.
Do you think people will explain their reasoning, or their, whatever they put in there?
Maybe we should add, like.
I can add something to like prompt them to say, please explain.
I would, I would add it as a new line, so they feel like they have, so that there's more of a.
Explain it good, but you might make a bigger box.
What do you, I'm sorry, what do you mean?
Can you make a bigger box after that?
Oh, you can type pretty much as long as you want.
Oh, you can, okay.
I wonder though, Jenny, if it's, the question ten is, are there certain uses you think should be limited or discouraged downtown? And then, maybe it's yes, no, and then a please explain.
Oh.
I think if you have a separate field for please explain, you'll get more explanations, yeah. Yeah, I don't know that you want maybe.
Maybe doesn't seem to be very helpful there.
Right? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, or just, yeah, or like please explain your previous answers, but yeah, that's fine.
And then, this one's a little cheesy, but, I mean, I've seen it before.
Yeah.
It's fun because you can create Word collages with it.
Yeah.
Um, for the positive ones at least.
Right. Okay, cool.
So that's it, it's twelve questions, it shouldn't take long, it should be like five minutes, I would think.
Yeah.
But I think it helps give us some supporting data for the zoning.
Really covered the waterfront with the questions, I was, I really was very. I think if you just expand the, uh, downtown Westboro zoning survey to just a little more interest there and a, a picture of the, um.
The downtown.
Downtown area we're talking about, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then for the zoning, we're, the zoning working group is meeting, um, tomorrow. So we'll talk more about this, um, but I know I told the board that I would come back with the draft after we talked about it a few meetings ago, um, and what we added here. And then see if you have any comments or questions, or want me to go over the, any of the tables, the table of uses.
The table's not the, I had an awful lot of questions on the definitions, and I'm, I'd kinda like to leave that out tonight only because, I mean, I could go on for a long time on those definitions.
Well, remember the green is stuff that's new, the other stuff is already existing.
It's the green stuff.
Okay.
That I have a lot of questions about. Um, I don't know whether anybody else has had a chance to review that particular thing, but I think it's something you really have to think about very, um, specifically. Um, and I have some questions that I need, that I wanna talk to Jenny about, and it, you know, I just don't find kind of spending time with me going through, I've got notes on, that I took when I was doing these, but I think you need to look at them very carefully, as far as the wording goes. And I would prefer perhaps to put a discussion on that offer, if people wanna take a look at it and write their comments and send them in to Jenny. Um, that might be a more efficient way to use that, those particular things.
Ahead of the eight-five meeting?
Yes, yeah, please. I don't want, what I don't want to happen is us to get to the public hearing, and then there's a ton of changes.
That's what I'm saying.
Substantial changes, you know?
Yeah, um, one, one question I had, I know that there aren't typically on these table of use documents, aren't typically, like the, the whole key, C R A A, et cetera, isn't, like I found a number of them online, the, the key is not there, I think we should add it. Cause even on our own site, I had a hard time making sure I was looking at this, at the right definitions of each of those.
Yeah, sure, it's in the beginning of the zoning bylaw, but I, I mean, if you're looking at this, you wouldn't necessarily know that.
The table itself?
No, I'm saying, um, where did I find it? It didn't.
You wanted it at the top, or it's a zoning district, you want an explanation there?
Yeah, so I did find it.
So the C means something.
I did find it on like the zoning, like I did find it, but like.
It's in the beginning of the zoning bylaw, but you have to go in, into it.
Okay.
So it's, I agree, it's not the easiest thing to find, but there's no reason why we can't add it up here.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Could you maybe just put at the beginning of, um, beginning of this, a, um, just a, a, um, a t- a table of reference, I guess is what I'm looking for.
Right, yeah, or the big key.
It says, C is this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yes.
R is this.
Yep.
Just do it that way, so I think, you know, you could run that and just, at the beginning, at the top, put that in so that people know. I mean, I look at C and people would say, well, what's C?
Right. Conservation.
Right.
But I know it, because.
But you know what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay.
And I agree with you, that would make it much clearer.
Right.
Cause I found the tables general, it was hard to read when I was trying to read one of them recently.
Yeah, I mean, it's zoning, I mean, the tables are super complicated.
Sure.
And we have so many zones.
That, that's kinda why, when we went through this with Jim, and we switched it from the PDF to E-code. So now on E-code, you can just search, and it'll bring you to whatever you need. Like before, it was all on PDF and it wasn't, couldn't find anything, so. Like most people who have questions can go to the E-code, and if you didn't know what IA is, you just type in IA, you know what?
Oh, yes, so I found that, but it would be really helpful, cause if you're like looking here, yeah.
Cause typically, like I, like personally, when I look through other town zoning, I like to see the table uses as a separate, like PDF, and then I kinda have that in it.
As like a reference?
Yeah, and then I go through, like the definitions or whatever, so.
Right.
Right, it is helpful, the E-code is very helpful.
Yeah.
Sure. Um, and then, so you have the table of uses that you can go through, and whatever's green on there is something that's changed.
Yeah, you just added what you done in green on the, um, definitions.
Right.
Is what you just stuck in the tables here.
Yes, yeah, and some of them I added because they were never in there to begin with, and, but they're within the bylaw. So with this, there's a lot of cleaning up, which honestly is mostly what the downtown zoning is. It's just cleaning it up and integrating it into the bylaw.
Is it reducing the complexity?
Reducing, I think so, just because there's less districts and less overlays. So, remember, the downtown has, um, three zones. Well, technically, four.
Four and overlays.
Because you have, um, the BB, which is the downtown.
Yeah.
Zone, you have the DPOD, the downtown planning overlay district.
Yeah.
You have the industrial, um, I think it's I.
IA.
IA, the industrial A, and then you have the senior living overlay district as well, which we're not touching. But if we make these changes, we will have the downtown zoning district and then the senior overlay.
Which is what we talked about, was reducing the number of districts that we sat over that.
Right.
Yes.
Which makes perfect sense.
I guess, how do I track that though? So I was looking kind of like line by line, and like do these uses, right? How do they fit within these spaces, but, um, I feel like I'm missing.
The map?
Maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess just trying to understand, I guess more like contextually of like the, what's collapsing maybe? I guess all of them, or into two?
Sure, I'll pull it up, hold on. Okay, so. And I'll pull up our G S map too.
Yeah, the green things conform to the, the definitions. That, you know, that will work as far as the table of use, but as I said, it's the definitions that I think need to be worked on.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, that's fine. Um, so this, uh, Chris, this orange here, that's the BB zone existing. The purple is industrial.
Yeah.
The stripes are the DPOD, so the downtown planning overlay district, which goes like a little bit over here.
Yeah.
And then over Bay State and down here. And then, this were, this is the gateway two district.
Yep.
Um, this, I don't even know what color this is.
So the thick colors are the new ones, right?
The, the red would be the new zone for downtown. The purple is the gateway. And then, because Baker Way is a residential zone, we wanted to change that from gateway to residential.
Okay, thank you for, okay, thank you, Jenny, okay, I remember that, alright.
So it'd be less colors and stripes and.
Okay, great, that makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, and this is, this is not final yet. You know, we still need to work with the zoning working group and, and draw out the lines, um, to figure out what we want to do.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, did you all want to talk about the, the dimensional stuff, or?
No, I think we're okay on that, I mean, I, you know, I don't think there's any reason really to do that.
Okay.
Is there any question, cause we have it tomorrow, right?
Right, and that's why I wanted any, any feedback you have today, so that we could talk about it tomorrow.
I don't have any problem with the tables. As I said, my problem is with the definitions for the tables, but, um, you know, as far as the tables go, I thought they were fine, cause they were put, you know, in appropriate places. So that, and, you know, I, I don't really have any comments, or can't make any comments on the minimum lot area, because that's what it is. When you get to some of those tables, that's the way they are, and you can't change them.
Oh, uh, besides the downtown?
Well, what I'm saying is, when I'm looking at some of the dimensional requirements and zoning things, um, some of this stuff is sort of set in stone, that there isn't much you can do about it.
Yeah, on the other zoning, on the other zones, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, I don't think we can, uh, handle changing more than one zone right now. But that does clean it up.
Yeah.
You know, it cleans up the, the table of dimensional controls. Right now, as I told the board before, it was on two separate tables, it's, it's very confusing. That's probably the number one question I get is, you know, what are my dimensional controls? I don't understand this table. And this puts it all on one page.
Right.
So that someone can come in and look at it and know what they need to do for dimensional stuff.
And I think that's very helpful, and I think, you know, it's the kind of thing that I, I would hope that we would have available to hand out to people, it would be helpful if there were some that were available to be handed out to people, just so, you know, sometimes not everybody uses the computer easily, and if you have a handout like this, it's very helpful, cause then you really can look at it and see what the uses are and the zones. So, I would suggest that we have some available that, you know, you could hand out to people.
Yeah, and, um, we will be going to a couple farmers markets in the near future, I don't have a date yet. We, we are working on that, um, to get more input on this from the public.
I think that's great.
So would that essentially be getting people to do the survey?
Mm-hmm.
And then also just like generally?
Yeah, just generally if they have questions on planning, or whatever, just be present.
Yeah.
So that, um, people can give their suggestions or comments.
Yeah, that's great.
The dump is the other place where there are a lot of comments being made on things.
Yeah.
But also is a source of great comments. Alright.
Yeah, another time for that, but we'll start with the.
No, but I, no, no.
Other states, like the farmer's market.
No, especially in the suburbs.
I meant, I meant as far as the dump went, as far as comments on things like the downtown plan. It's where I run across comments down there.
Oh, that's funny.
So, not the, I'm not talking about the dump, I'm talking about meeting places of people that express opinions.
The library, Jenny.
And perhaps talk to each other. Alright, are there any, I think this is great, Jenny, so, you know, move forward, and are there any other planning updates?
Um, yeah, so I have, um, I wanted to bring this up.
Do you wanna send a message to John and tell him?
Yeah, I was just doing that actually, um.
I can text, I can text.
Not to.
You mind texting him, so I can talk?
Yeah, just tell him that we probably will be done by the time he drives here and there, so there's no point in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Since we're not voting on anything tonight.
Um, I did send this out to the board, but I just wanted to make sure the public was aware. Um, and we did send it out on a newsflash and on Facebook, that, um, beginning July first, so beginning today, WRTA's, um, on-demand transportation service, VIA, has been new and improved. Um, they've updated their service zones, they were selected as the new service provider through 2027. They included, um, or they added on Northborough and then a service shift in Shrewsbury for any Westboro residents or individuals commuting to Westboro. Um, they'll have access at the MBTA station, and they'll now also have access to downtown Northborough and the Solomon Pond Mall. And then all vehicles are now wheelchair accessible. Um, so this is the flyer we distributed on it. Um, so this is the flyer we distributed on it, and rides are $2 a ride.
That's great.
Yeah, I saw, this is great, Jenny. I think it's great. It looked like it was getting some good, um,
Feedback.
Feedback, yeah. Um, do we, I guess, what's the, what's, what's the town's obligation? Are we like subsidizing the rides? Or like, how does that work?
This is totally through WRTA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
We just start promoting it.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, I guess, follow-up question. Are there other ways we want to promote this? And I think about like high school kids, I don't know, is that?
Next year, I mean, a lot of, a lot of parents do use.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, a lot of high schools.
Okay, great, okay.
Oh, yeah, a lot of them do.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this was really good because if you remember, we had those meetings with WRTA about, you know, what they wanted, what we wanted to see for transportation needs, and they had the short-term and the long-term goals, and this is something short-term that they were able to accomplish. Expand the service area, um, the wheelchair accessibility was a really big thing.
With the wheelchair accessibility.
Right, right. They've improved their app apparently, um, so I'll have to try it out. I haven't tried it out.
Right.
Right. Anything else?
Um, no, I don't think so. Nothing I, I have not answered.
Um, I've not, oh, I was at a, um, design review board meeting. And we approved, there is a barber shop over behind where Swansky's Bakery is.
Yes.
Torres, that has just opened. Um, we're still the, um, the small houses that are going up on Smithville Parkway down, um, beyond the Warewood Station.
Yep.
Um, they came back to us on looking at design of the small houses down there across from Faruks Development. So he's moving along. I mean, he's, you know, way ahead on that because they haven't cleared the site yet, but, you know, he is, was looking for any feedback on design and so forth, so we did discuss that. And I think that was it on design review. Any other meetings? Okay, um, minutes, I know we got the minutes for 6:17. Um, I took a look at them. I didn't have any changes. Anybody else?
Nope, no.
Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? And the final announcement is that we will only have this one meeting in July. Our next meeting is August 5th. And that will be the only meeting in August unless something comes up where we feel we need an extra meeting. So if there's nothing else, I.
Sorry, one quick question, I guess just a clarifying question. How do you want us to submit comments on the potential, like the zoning changes in our own documents or like in one central place, or how do you want us to do that?
In your own documents because we can't collaborate on one document because you're all in it.
You have to do that individually.
That's what I thought, just making sure. Okay.
It would be nice and easier, but.
I know.
Sorry.
Norrie's, Norrie's just checking. Thank you.
When do we have to submit this by?
The comments? By August 5th.
Yeah, no, okay.
Yeah.
Do you have enough time?
I mean, per, preferably.
My comments are tomorrow.
Yeah, you'll have your comments tomorrow, but.
Exactly.
Um, I mean, preferably like a week before the August 5th meeting so that I can have everything
Okay.
for that meeting. Um, but I just want to make sure we talk about this.
When do you have to submit things to the town? Is it August 5th or?
No, it would be, um, beginning of September, so we'll probably schedule the public meeting, the first September meeting.
We're actually ahead this year, slightly.
Yes, I'm trying to be ahead.
Okay, if I could have a motion to adjourn, then if there's nothing else, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, everyone stay cool. Have a good summer.
Thank you so much.
And I will see you in August.